We're ready, we'll get started. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. Looks like we got a lot of important information. Not a long agenda, but stuff that's gotta be covered, so appreciate it. So we'll convene a call meeting at work. And we'll need Mr. Johnson's statement to be able to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion under General Statute 143, 318.11, subsection A1, A3, and A6 to consider matters required by state or federal law to be discussed in confidence for discussions with the board's attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to consider the qualifications or performance of a prospective or current employee of the Board of Education.
Want to make a motion? Motion by Mr. Whitaker to enter closed session. Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. We're in our important conference room. I think Kent did it last night also. Would you like to do the back-in opposition? Welcome everybody back. Mr. Hudson, if you would, please, if you want to join us in the plan and prayer, please.
Father, we thank you for another day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to do the business of the school system. Lord, we just ask you to lead in God in the way that we think and in our hearts. Lord, sometimes we get riled up. And Lord, I just ask you to bring us to that place of peace. Or we ask you to just be at the midst of this meeting. Whatever you would have done, we will give you the honor and glory for that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Before we get started on the first item on the agenda, the plan for remaining capital funds, I just want to clear something up and make sure that all the board understands and is good with this. We do, on the agenda for our working sessions, we're a little bit more liberal about getting them out way in advance because I see tonight as a learning process anyway. We're gonna operate, we're gonna take action on these issues in two weeks at our business meeting. So sometimes things get added that are a little bit later and maybe not have as much time to look at. Is that the way everybody else understands it? Or are y'all looking at it different? Because I want to make sure that we're giving everybody the time they need. But then if it's a work session, like with the committee, sometimes we would, we'd get that information close to the end. So what do y'all think?
Yeah, that's fine. As long as we don't have anything to vote on that requires action, then I'm fine getting the information today.
And I think too, I don't think it's gonna be, you know, a bunch, but it's gonna be times when things like come up. And what I was thinking of, this one, you know, because we had the item on that agenda, but I didn't see the worksheet until late today.
It wasn't added until later today because we had to sit down with Aldra, Robert, Doug, myself to kind of finalize it. And there's no timetable on the expenditure of these funds.
So we could take it up at the...
We're not under any timeline. The...
So there's no code funds in here, right? Because these have to be...
No, no. But just looking at the agenda, the protecting our students' training, that came up as a meeting, Mr. Powell went to a meeting last week. And that came up. That is time-sensitive. But again, it's under reports, discussion, and we put the word pending action. And when I put something under reports and discussion, honestly, that's where I kind of leave it. If you decide to take action, then that's on the board. And sometimes you have taken action and sometimes not. But when we put things under section four, that's truly just an information item only to give you... And some of these things will never come to a vote. They're just information items, just like the NIL agreements on high school sports. That's being mandated, but we put it on there as a discussion topic so that you're aware, well aware, as you may get questions. When a cellphone, telephone usage in middle school and high schools, information item. The one thing that we will need to take action on tonight is the safety grant. And we told you last month that was coming back, or told you at the last meeting. And it's really just used to give us the approval to apply what things are important. And so, again, we finalized that today.
And I think that process is fair. Because then we can decide as a board, do we have enough information to make a decision or do we want to carry it to the next business? Does that sound reasonable?
What helps us and helps the directors is if there's additional information you need to vote or to then tell us during this work session so we can add it to the business meeting and then get you the information between now and that business meeting. That helps us. We have, there's a lot of policy work getting ready to come our way. And so the policy stuff, there's gonna be, we're gonna have to set aside quite a bit of time to do these policy updates in the fall. Doug, I can't remember how many policies, but...
There are 44 total.
Forty-four that need review?
Can you go ahead and be sending those to us so we can be looking at the whole, every get-together?
I have a spreadsheet already ready. I'll share that out.
Do you already have the recommendations from State Board of Education Association?
Send that to you, please.
We can add all that to the next work session. But that's just, that's a lot, that'd be a lot of work force to do.
Having said that, I think it's a great idea. We do need to sort of piece those because there's a lot to take in at one time. But I also would just, I think on behalf of the board, say that if we are having a business session, we still need that five days notice so that we can review that. But a work session, you know, this is learned anyway, right? So, okay. Just want to make sure that's still okay with everybody. Okay. Mr. Drone?
Board members, the spreadsheet that's in front of you, I wanted to give you an update on the capital-outlaid budget. And I wanted to compare, the 2024 is on the left-hand column, and the 2023, 24, at the very top, is on the right-hand column.
Could I have just a quick indulgence? I forgot to get approval on the agenda.
Make a motion for me to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Bluntso, second by Mr. Hudson to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. I wanted to hear what Robert had to say, so I just skipped right on. All right. So how are we gonna spend this money?
I wanted to show you last year's comparison to this year. And remember, the county commissioners are allocating our capital funds just a little differently. In the past, they've given us $115 per student, and then we had to request special appropriations for special projects. So at the very top, you'll kind of see what that's last year. At the 115 and the 6992, we received $800,000. Then, we received, we asked for fire alarm replacements at seven schools. We asked for the mobile unit lease payments, the paving projects and roofing projects, and those were funded. And so last year, our total amount was 1.9 million. This year, you can see, we received 312 per student. Increase in students to 7,016 and 2.18 million. Kind of shows you that the net increase from last year to this year, if you include special projects, is $284,000. So, as we think about that, we've been going to the county commissioners every single year, putting special projects, asking for those on kind of a singular basis, one by one by one. And what the county's told us is they want us to come up with their own plan. And Robert's done that. I wanted you to kind of see where the money is budgeted in this year's budget. And then show you what were the remaining funds out of that 2.1, where the remaining funds are. And then Robert has created five recommendations or kind of his top-five list of areas that we need to work on. And so, first of all, take a look at the expenditures, and let me know if you have questions. A couple of things there that we have done is set aside funds for items that we know will need to be replaced in years to come. I see that being fiscally responsible. We also know there's a large commodity truck that we're gonna need to replace. This is a big-ticket item. This is a 16-foot box truck that's used every day to deliver goods. This is the kind of vehicle I don't think you want to lease based on the mileage, but we, the current model, I think, is a 2003.
That's correct.
So we've had that one for 20-plus years. So we're just kind of setting aside some funds, trying to think about how we save to purchase another one. Another piece in this budget is furniture. We did budget $100,000 for furniture. In years past, we've had no furniture budget. And you've been in our schools and seen the need. We've got a lot of needs for furniture, and $100,000 will not go very far in our schools. And Mr. Hudson, I know you're aware of your, the school system you work in, I'm sure has a large capacity of storage and probably a lot of furniture in storage. We just really have none. We've got very little storage room, and we just don't have a lot of extra furniture around. So when things break, we're kind of scrambling. We're gonna have a furniture department.
Now, when we say we're setting aside money like this, we leave it in the general fund. How is it earmarked if it's gonna be three years from now that we use it? I mean, how is that? It's not moved into a separate savings account. So how do we keep track to make sure that we're...
Like, the future total preparers, 225,000.
How are we making sure that we don't rob Peter or Paul if we need to later on?
Sure. Yeah. Obviously, that's an Aldra question. If we could, I can get the answer from Aldra. Same with the truck. I think she's just gonna put it in a separate line item with a separate budget code and know that that's funding that we're gonna set aside for those special projects.
Now, is that the truck preparers, you're talking about the law firms?
Yes, sir.
Is that just to put money in there to be able to replace in a certain period of time?
Yeah, 10 to 12 years.
10 to 12?
Yeah, 10 to 12 years.
They're supposed to be putting like 30,000 a year from the school level, right? But they were saving in maintenance on the fields.
We've not formalized that. I know that's been discussed, but we've not formalized that.
Maybe it's sold in this number here.
Well, I think if you look at 30,000 a year per school, that's 90. 90 in 10 years is not gonna touch what we're gonna have to replace those carpets. So, yeah. I don't know how that budget would go to the schools.
So is that planned?
I think typically, every third year, right, a high school gets a larger amount that they can use for athletics, right? Every high school?
$15,000. And then they have to spend, they have to pay half that back.
Okay. So I wonder where they come up to 30,000 a year that they, that it costs them to maintain those fields?
That's what the AD and Alagany, that's who he threw at.
Okay.
I knew 30,000 from somebody.
Yeah, he said they had saved 30,000. That's all he said.
Mr. Hudson, I missed your question.
It's just, is there a plan to prevent each individual school to save 30,000 per year? Because you're adding 300,000, that'd be near a million dollars to add to 2.25, I guess.
Well, and I sort of wondered how, because they don't get 30,000 a year from us for athletics. So I don't know how they would put it aside. So I don't know.
Where you gotta think about... You gotta think about things that are more related to the district, such as water usage. There's no need to irrigate.
Right.
So now, we're gonna save X number of dollars a year in the district's budget because we're not paying that water bill to whoever. But that's one thing that's really coming back to us anyway.
Alagany wouldn't really say in this individual high school we're saving 30,000. They're saying the total cost, which is spread out on the local school and the district, was approximately 30,000.
Not saying it was for school or... But including all these things that...
Mowing, spraying, paint for marking the fields. Yeah, there's lots of things that come into play that I guess would create that $30,000, but...
So it's a mixture between what the school does...
We haven't developed that savings chart or whatever we'll say.
Now, if we held that 640,000, because we can bank it, if we held it, do you feel like that's a good emergency fund? Because from my understanding, y'all tell me if I'm wrong, when we went back for special project appropriations in the past, that's not the way going forward. You get this money and...
That's it.
There you go.
Yep.
So should we hold that 600,000 for emergency?
I'm thinking about what Bill Powell recommended about, you know, right now, it looks like he's recommending 7.2 million a year to do and to maintain it. That would go toward that, but still, I mean, if we don't, then we got a catastrophic overnight HVAC system, C-system crashed in Moore's Center because we didn't do the periodic maintenance we needed to do. Or that roof at Coquelin, where it leaks.
I'll just tell you how we've done this in the past prior to this new way is. And then I'll give you some examples of things that we've done. Roofing. We have always tried to complete at least two roof replacements every year since I've been the director, to stay ahead and stay on top of that and not have to come back by kicking the can down the road, as old saying goes, and then be facing millions of dollars worth of roofing work that we need to do.
Like we had to do central middle.
Correct.
So, as far as, to your question, Mr. Bluntso, as far as saving, I don't think we can afford to save the entire 640,000 because in order to do that, then we've got to kick the can down the road on our roof replacements now, on our flooring replacements, and on any other type thing. I mean, we've still got, even though we were very benefit by Esser to be able to replace a lot of our mechanical equipment, we've still got some that we weren't able to address with Esser funds that we need to be thinking about, you know, in the short term, next year, the year after, or whatever be the case. So as far as saving those amounts of money, I, as a maintenance director or plant operations, whatever you want to call it, don't see that we can afford to do that. We're gonna back ourselves into a corner.
Those two roofs are the bulk of that 640,000, right?
It could be, yes, sir. And typically, that's, you know, the 500 to 600,000 a year has been what it's been taking to do these roofs because almost all of the roofs in our district that are not a stand-in seam metal roof already have two roofs on them. And code says that's all you can have. Once you get to that second layer, you've got to take it all the way down to the deck and start all over again, which is one of the reasons that our roofs cost a little bit more is because you're facing that two-roof thing.
So all these recommendations have to be pulled from the remaining funds?
Correct. Yes, sir.
But now, do, help me, correct me, when we talk about lottery funds, we will have, recur, every year, we're getting more money into that based on lottery funds. And then we just need to go to the commissioners and say, we have a roof leak, we need to replace it. Will you support us using that money?
So, now, my numbers are, these are probably four months old, but you have 2.6 million in lottery funds.
That would be just for emergencies?
Yes. You also have about 800,000 in the renovation and repair, which we're using, we'll use all of that for all these safety measures. That's going to bid at the end of this month, 1st of November.
It's going to bid the 1st of November, receive bids before Thanksgiving.
I think we have almost 900,000, because that money, I think, is submitted quarterly. So in repair and renovation, which we can spend on that safety stuff, you also have almost a million dollars in capital fund balance, which is discretionary on top of your 2.6. So I think you're probably covered with an emergency. Whereas, I think, going back to Robert's points, these, we have typically used all this money just for general maintenance and general upkeep, trying to stay ahead. The flooring at Wesfield is obviously another thing we're trying to do is take carpets out of schools for cleanliness. And that carpet's original to that school, it was 20, 20-some years on it.
And having been in construction for 30 years myself, 25 to 30 years on a building, you're gonna start to see everything break. And we know that some of these were built in the 60s, 70s, 80s. They're already over that 25.
Well, we went through a pretty extensive replacement plan with flooring. So we're kind of to that point now to where we're back to starting again. You know, it's strongly recommended that we get rid of carpet just, you know, because of the indoor air quality and the cleanliness and all of that stuff. So we're going away from the carpet piece, unless it's in maybe an admin area or the media center, you know, where it's less traffic, those type of things. So that's, that's one of the reasons that I put that on here is because I don't feel like, I feel like that's another one of those things that we can't afford not to address on an annual basis.
And your LVT typically is gonna last longer than the carpet, right? So it's gonna buy us a few more years than what we're getting now.
The beauty of LVT is it requires no stripping, no waxing. The labor cost involved in floor care, it's reduced almost nothing. But, because all you gotta do is just mop it with a disinfectant, neutral cleaner or whatever, and you're done. So it's gonna, it's gonna save the district lots of money over the years in just labor cost and as well as material cost when it comes to buying stripper and wax every year for it.
Does that make you feel pleased a little?
And if you think about hospitals, that's what they're going to now. You don't see VCT in hospitals anymore. Everything's LVT.
Well, I'm completely fine with it. I just want to make sure that we were in a position to where, I agree, we gotta get ahead of the curve. I just didn't want us to come up and need a $250,000 alarm, and we didn't have the money to set aside somewhere else. But I see what you're saying.
So when do you think you would be able to have an estimate where we could start to look at the ones that are recommended? How we could start to work?
Well, I spoke to Mr. Lawson today. He's a section chief with Department of Public Instruction, Plan Operations. He's helped me for several years now on these type of projects, especially roofing. So he is hopefully gonna try to come up Thursday and look at our roofs that are next in line and give us, get to work on. He does all the design, he does the specifications, he helps me with the bidding and everything. So hopefully, he would be able to, you know, work that into his schedule, and we'd be able to come back to you, you know, hopefully in a month or two with some estimated cost. You really not want to know the true numbers until you bid these projects out. But he's pretty good about estimating. He usually gets me within 10%, 15% of what the actual costs are, so...
Now, we had a major project last year, didn't we, on the gym at Surrey Central? Has that already been taken care of? I remember that was an issue with some of the, or with all the locker rooms in the gym. There was something at Surrey Central on the gym roof.
We did, we had a tear, but we did a repair on it.
But at some point, you mentioned we may have...
Oh, yeah. We, I mean, honestly, we could do 10 a year if we had the, if we had the money, but we just kind of tackle them as they fail. And get to that point where, but Coquelin Elementary's grand building is the most, highest priority, in my opinion, because it has torn open three times in the last, since spring. And we've had to do some pretty major repairs on it. I've had, actually had professional roofing services come out and look at it, and they, you know, they recommended it to be replaced as soon as possible.
Is it a flat roof?
It is, yes, sir.
I was thinking about that huge tree, those trees right there beside the grand building. It's from there and...
Yeah, that's actually on my long-range plan, is for those to be removed and taken out. Especially now that we renovated the gymnasium and there's, one of those trees has a limb about this big that's leaning out over the canopy and the roof of the gym. So that's a whole nother, whole nother thing. My recommendation would be move forward with the two-roof estimates. Get those numbers so that we kind of know what we're facing.
See where we're at with the rest.
See where we fall, you know, is it gonna take 500,000, 600,000, you know? And then we'll know if we, out of those remaining funds, if we can move to number two or skip two and go to 3, 4, 5, whatever the board pleases.
You need that board consensus without blocking, right? Just to get an estimate?
Yeah, just to get your, from the DPI estimates to help us. Yeah, I think that's, that good consensus to everybody. That we start on at least those two, and maybe even the flooring, to see what it would cost, because you're just gonna have to get an estimate on it, right?
I can do the flooring. Yeah, I can work with a couple of locals and get an idea on that, on the flooring.
And then the loading dock is one of the things, the flat rock that we talked about. We hoped that might be reasonable. Extend it out, raise it up where the truck would fit it.
I got a local contractor to look at and give us an estimate, and it was right at $21,000.
Which wasn't far off from what we were thinking, right? We were thinking maybe 20?
And I extended it pretty, I don't know how familiar you are with flat rock, but I went ahead and extended the dock over to where the dumpsters are. So the ladies could just come out of the kitchen, walk across the dock, and put their trash in the dumpster and not have to go down the steps and around.
So that would save some...
So it increased the cost a little bit. But I feel like that that's the right thing to do.
But it's still gonna pull it almost out to the driveway, right? So any trucks unloading, they're just gonna block the driveway.
They'll have plenty of room now to put the ramp down and go into the building. Now, it will, you know, it will create a, you know, while the truck's there, it will block the drive, but I mean, that's just part of it. You have to deal with it.
Any questions? Anything else? That sounds good. That's good, what you need to get started on at least those. Okay. All right, we've got a long-range plan.
Appreciate everybody coming together with Mr. Powell to go through section 1, 2, and 3. And in that meeting, we said we would kind of come back and talk about next steps in the work session today. So since you've had time to reflect, you may have additional questions and/or direction for Robert and I as we kind of think about next steps with the long-range planning document and any additional information you'd like.
We were gonna find 344 million dollars.
I think it was great. The ideas, they're just not realistic. I believe in what the cost, that's just why I took them. We have severe needs, but in no realm that I think we'll ever find 344 million dollars plus $7 million in maintenance.
And I think if we don't, at least to tackle it, we're gonna, we're gonna end up where we're at now. And then when that, the whole building, the roof fails or whatever, or the foundation settles, then we're in trouble.
Yep.
And then we got one place and one place on it, who get it?
I like the, his phase one was the two cafeterias at the high schools because we all agree that's the most needed. But I think we need to look at it as the 8 million dollars absolutely necessary versus the 18 million if we had our choice.
And that's what we submitted for the need-based grant was a... And what surprised me is the two cafeterias at two elementary schools because their need was almost, their score was almost as low as the high school. So that's something right behind it.
Flat rock was one of them.
Yeah. Okay. Want y'all to play...
Dixon Ward just got a big job.
You know, I know there was a lot of discussion about growth, enrollment, birth rates, where are we going as a county? And there's some of that you can't predict. And then some of that is based on, you know, where we're at. Is there an appetite to, for Bill to come back and go through section 4, 5, and 6, which is capacity, buildings, enrollment, growth trends, census data, and birth and kindergarten enrollment?
Well, I think what I was most concerned about was, is you look at excess capacity. Okay, we got five classrooms at North Shore we don't need. There's not a way we can cut those off and save any money. So you keep them, and I don't, we're gonna, we're gonna probably be hit a little bit when we got all this 36% excess capacity. But I don't see any way that that helps us because we can't get rid of them. The only way to do that is to shut down a building. And I don't think we've got any buildings that, the entire building is not useful in some way. Is that, Robert, would you, do you see anywhere we could take a look at this and say, okay, we can do without that? And really, it's just gonna be the maintenance and the operations of it that we can save by being rid of it. Right? First few years when he tear it down, we'd probably lose money. It's gonna cost us more than what we saved, so. I, I just didn't see, I, I understand and appreciate the excess capacity discussion he had, but I'm not sure how we're gonna use that to solve our problem versus not building back as big. We, we're able to small.
Well, I know a lot of his, a lot, a lot of Bill's thought was repurposing.
Okay.
Repurposing those areas that we're not using into, you know, maybe expanding programs that we already have.
Like CTE ag.
Correct.
Things like three ag buildings are.
So that's, that's one way you can utilize, you know, space that we have available is to repurpose it into something else.
I think the other thing that Bill was trying to plant the seed, and this is a seed, is to think long-term about where people are at and where they could potentially be versus where they currently at, meaning redistricting schools. That's not a popular topic. I'll give you an example. Several years ago, we redistricted a small section on the left-hand side of Highway fifty-two. It was in the Westfield community. It was redistricted to Pilot Elementary School. Because, um, no, I'm sorry, it was redistricted out of Pilot into Westfield. Because we were experiencing, uh, we were at, at capacity at Pilot, had space at Westfield. And so we grandfathered students in, and then eventually as students aged up into kindergarten first second, they, they transitioned going to Westfield versus going to Pilot. It was just a small tweak and really didn't impact a lot of students, but it was a small tweak made based on a lot of intelligence gathering based on the data. I think those are some of the things that Bill's also trying to showcase to the board, long range. The census data, when you take a look at that, I mean, it is a, it's kind of a crystal ball, but it's twenty years' worth of, of data. You don't know what the next ten years are gonna hold. However, that gives you, you know, twenty years of trend data. So, and none of us know what, what could happen just across a county line, and, and that could impact one, one section of the community as far as housing or, or business or growth.
Well, and I read through, back through one, two, and three again today, I really like his idea about, when we look at these three high schools and the, the two cafeterias, how do we go ahead and build in now the infrastructure for technology, for electrical, for HVAC, so that when we come back and do the rest of it, we don't have to do it again. It's already there. We put in the capacity for the whole school versus, which, and that case is gonna be fairly low, I would think. But if you gotta do it later, ten years from now, at eight percent, at eight percent, at eight percent, maybe we can talk to a construction company around here that can help us with some costs. But I, I did like that, as we did those two phases, so that we, we try to plan for the future to save us money down the road. So apparently everybody else has got the same, same answer as I do. I don't know.
That's a, it's just a, that's a large, I, personally, I think we have to, we've got to just, as a board prioritize, what is the absolute, we've got to get it done. And right now.
It's phase one.
It's the phase one with the cafeterias. And then from there, you know, and I believe a lot of will do this master plan. Got the RFQs out, or it's coming out, or is that already?
It's out. It's out. We've had a lot of interest too.
But I think that really our, our next steps may be more along the lines of what comes from that.
Well, and I, I'd like to suggest this, which I think we talked about it at our last meeting. It is a time to sit down with the commissioners and give them a copy of this and say, this is, you know, we've been telling you what we thought we needed. Now we've got a study that tells us. And, and they've already told us that they think that they're gonna be getting to a point where they could relieve some money off the books and debt, that maybe that we can pick up some and start to build some of these. Because I had a commissioner already saying, I wanna sit down and talk to you about the power plan. And so they've got it on the radar. How about, can we try to see if Dr. Reese can set up a joint meeting between all ten of us and say, you know, or eleven, twelve of us, and say, now, how do we get it to? Because if you remember last year down in Westfield, that's where the idea came up, was us looking at the cafeterias from the commissioners. So I think it's a good idea that we all sit in a room and try to figure out how we can do this together versus us having to carry that weight on our back by ourselves.
I would love to do that. And I'd also like to hear what Mr. Powell, the rest of what he has to say too, because I, I can't know, well, unless I read the whole thing. Based on phase one, what his plan is at the, maybe phase, phase four.
Yeah.
How that ties into phase one, or where, where does he plan on, I'd like to know where he plans on us getting that money from.
You almost feel like you, you buy the book and then you get the rest of the answers.
Well, yeah, let's, let's, let's vote on it and then we'll find out what's in it.
Well, he can make recommendations to us. I just don't think he wanted to go too far.
Yeah.
But I gotta tell you.
I'd still like to hear what he has to say.
One of the first things I thought of, Robert, when I looked at Julie's there about the, the capital needs, the grand building roof, work on the grand building. It was in phase two in here, right? So, you know, do we, make sure when we do that roof, it's gonna work with the future plans for the grand building as we go forward? I know you, you've got all that figured out, but I, as that construction mind is whirling in my head, how do we tie that together and make sure we don't put a brand-new roof on and then tear it off in three years?
Yeah.
So that. So do y'all want to just see if Dr. Reese can set up a joint meeting with him and see, is that something he thinks doable?
I, I, I can ask, what you got from there?
Raleigh and Melissa need to be there because they're gonna be part of helping us get this done in the future.
Talking about Bill.
Yeah, with Bill coming and talking.
I think he'd be important, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he definitely, he needs to be there, I think, too.
Yep, I'll be glad to set it up. Any, do you want Bill to come and talk to you again?
Yeah, the next day. Because we got through three, is that right?
I think if we're doing that, how do, do we get to Bill by the hour or how does that work?
So he, this, this part of his contract was to come and present.
It would be nice if the commissioners could hear what we're hearing at the same time. Then we don't have to go back to them and explain to them what it says.
Yeah. Well, and I think, because Melissa asked, I mean, the commissioner asked me about this.
Yeah.
So have you already sent this to Chris?
No.
Okay. So I think that's another good step too, is let them have a copy of this.
Sure.
I did tell her the day at, at a meeting, I said, it's almost as thick as your budget book you get every year, so you're ready to see it. Yeah.
And the other thing, when you get to section fourteen, I mean, there's, Bill has some different options. And they're, again, just options. I think the thing he's trying not to do is tell you what to do. He's just trying to put, put it all out there on the table and then allow you to consume it and then try to make informed decisions based on all the other pieces that you, that you've heard. He's done this a long time, and as you stated, he, he has, he knows what questions you're gonna ask, because he, he, he's anticipating those. But he's also knows that he doesn't need to come in with a plan and say, this is what you need to do, Surrey County Board. That's, that's not really his role. His role is really to, to tell you what the data is and maybe where he thinks it could, could go. And then you, you ask questions and then he'll, he'll answer those accordingly.
But isn't that where all of this sort of comes together? The long range plan, the forecast, we're gonna need it. We as a board have got to say that we need to consolidate some schools, that we need to get rid of a, a building out of school and reuse it, repurpose it. And then that all flows back to the commissioners. This is what we've done to keep the costs down as best we can. But when you got four hundred dollars a square foot, it's not gonna be cheap. And the more we go, like you mentioned to me last year when we were talking about the, one of the needs based grants, the longer we go, the more expensive it's gonna be versus, you know, how do we try to tackle some of it now?
And I, I just say this, in a historical context, this is a perfect storm for, for this board. Because you're in the seat when these buildings are up for renovation. You, you, you're here. And I think about boards of education back in the late fifties, those are some hot seats too. Let's, let's consolidate all of our, our county schools and then put them in one high school and then build a new school. So, and let's close all those, you know, smaller county high schools and send them all to Dobson or send them all to North Surrey or send them all to Pilot Mountain. But now those buildings, you're, you're in the seat where the next step, the next phase, the next era of construction has got to be taken care of. And oh, by the way, your bus garage is too small. The bus garage needs to be replaced. And, and oh, by the way, you have no storage. You don't have a furniture budget. Well, your central office is really not big enough. And it, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things stacking up. I mean, you, you didn't create it, but you're, you're here. And it's, it is kind of a perfect storm. And then we just came out of COVID and all these other things are stacking up.
And Raleigh's reconsidering things.
Yeah.
Too late now.
Four hundred dollars a square foot for, for building cost and inflation is where it's at. It is, it is a, it's, it is what it is, but that's the time we're at right now. And I think that's why this, this is a lot to consume. But I think it represents the needs on kind of a grand scale that have, it's where we're at. And I think we just have to take it one piece at a time, starting with the kitchen, the cafeterias is, is a small step, but it is one small step in a bigger, bigger plan. And I think, I think we're heading in the right direction. The master plan, I think, kickstarts that. But there's gonna have, there would be some other key decisions and key conversations that have to happen along the way.
Do you want to get that master plan and put it together with this to go to the commissioner? Or do you want to go in with this?
I think we need to go forward with this because, you know, I'm just talking out loud, but in the next budget cycle, I think we need to have a plan. I think we need to have some recommendations and maybe some requests. If we, the master plan may take, I anticipate it'll take twelve months to complete.
Yeah.
Don't you, Robert?
But it should support this based on.
Well, we, we put it, we put it for six months, and it has to be due in six months. Once it is awarded to an architect and contract negotiator.
Puts us in the timeline to go back to the commissioner.
And maybe that would help inform, but also in part of that master plan, we were asking them to go ahead and do the drawings for the kitchen and cafeterias.
That might be a year out, yes.
That would take a lot longer.
Well, and I think too, we, to me, we as a board have got to be able to say, okay, yeah, we got eight million in there for that cafeteria. Well, can't you dial your engineer back down to five? Well, now, when we have to go back and put that infrastructure in for the technology and for the electrical and HVAC, because we took it out, it may cost us six million instead of three to add it back in. So why don't we put it in with the new cafeteria, a new entrance, new security measures, things like that. To me, makes sense as an investment, because we're paying a little more now than we're saving a whole lot later. We just gotta be able to convince the people with the checkbook that we need eight point two, not five point seven.
I think one of the key things that, that in my mind with this ten-year plan and the high schools is in 2013, to renovate the high schools was like seventeen, eighteen million dollars.
Now sixty.
Ten years, we're now ten years down the road, and that same process is pushing sixty million dollars. So you can't afford not to, not to bash your gas pedals, you know?
Really start.
Because it's costing you money when you wait.
And Bill didn't add anything.
No.
So there's no inflation?
There's no, I mean, well, if you took the 2013 plan and put it beside the 2023 plan as far as the renovation of the three high schools, there's really been no extra, any extra stuff's not been added. It's the same, same stuff.
Same concept.
Yes, so perhaps we look at the former ten-year plan and evaluate how, because you all knocked out the large majority of what was in that plan. How did you do that? I mean, you, you knocked out a lot in ten years, so how did you do that? And let's formulate a plan based loosely on that to attack our plan.
Bonds, right? I mean, isn't that how they got the money?
The Financial Advisory Group, DDC, really helped the county set aside and prioritize where, where they could take off tax service or debt service without, without, you know, doing any additional bonds. Now, I'm not sure, they may have used some law bond money to pay for our projects. We, they, you know, we got twenty-five million to do those three elementary schools. I'm not sure how they, how they funded that on their side, but that, the financial group really helped them. And that, I mean, they may want to have that group at this meeting too, to hear us all the information. But I thought they were very helpful at the Westfield meeting. February twenty-eighth meeting, when we had the budget meeting with the, you know, the work session with the county commissioners, they were very helpful that day.
At the time, when I came on the board and they were building the Rockford Elementary, I can't remember what that cost, but the contractor said he'd just make them pay for it. Wasn't making any profit. I mean, just people were looking for work to do then. And so that's when we built the Pilot Mountain Elementary. I made the other board, I was, I came on, it was already under my charge. So it's a lot different atmosphere now, and we can't find somebody to do the work. Then they were begging for it.
To come down to your session.
It wasn't coming out of the recession.
Yep.
All right, I'll work on setting up the meeting with county commissioners to discuss facilities and try to invite Bill Powell to that meeting, and I'll go sit down with Chris and see what we can.
And you can tell Chris where we're at. He can say, would, maybe he can advise you on when would be a good time.
Yeah.
And we stay out of the budget process right now.
Yeah.
Good idea. Thank you.
Bill is a thorough guy, I believe. I still haven't, I mean, I've looked through it, but I still haven't.
I'm still only up to six, and we got fourteen. A lot to work on. Okay. Any other comments or questions on that? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You didn't have to say past five. Go, Blaine, I said, hey.
I will. Thank you.
Hey, DPI math standard survey. Amy and Mike, listen. Yes, a dub ad, if you.
Yeah, so these ladies might be able to answer a little more about that, but the math standards for North Carolina are under review, and they're asking for feedback from stakeholders across the state.
Again, this is a time, this, this is, surveys are due November fourth. They're asking adults for information. We just wanted to give you a heads up that this is being discussed around the state. And you may have folks that you'd like to send the survey to, so they could, they could weigh in. So I'll turn it over to Amy and Margaret for any, any additional information.
Well, it's just a survey that is, it's asking, there is a standard by standard survey for teachers to fill out. So that gives our teachers input on the standards. If there's something in there that they don't feel is age appropriate, they can make a request for that to be moved to a different grade level, something like that. We worked on our PSU survey already, but there is a stakeholder survey that can go to anyone in the community. It doesn't gather personal information. It just asks about math, mathematics, the standards, how it's taught.
How do we make sure that the people that are taking the survey know what they're talking about? I don't want somebody just going in that, you know, I've heard they take a survey and it skews the results. I mean, I would think it'd need to be teachers and parents.
There is one request on there for being able to ask for the standard by standard explanation.
Yeah.
I think they're also gonna look at this, this is statewide. This is not just a county yet. So you can think about the amount of data and feedback that they're gonna get.
And the all stakeholder survey is, it's, it's a minimal amount of questions compared to the standard by standard. It'd be more for teachers.
I got you.
If you went to the standard by standard.
So somebody like Dennis can actually answer this one.
Well, there's two different surveys.
There are two different surveys.
Bill, I don't know.
Well, there's two different surveys.
There are two different surveys.
Okay. So we got the overview, the general survey, PDF. That's just what it looks like?
Yes, that's just what it looks like.
So this is information for us to know if we made a question.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I did look, I looked through some of the, uh, uh, school improvement plans and looking at science, math, and English or reading, and our, our math scores look decent. So all we can do. So all we can do, hopefully then would be improve it what we're gonna get here.
So this survey is due November 4th, is that right? Do we get to, as to how many responses we have from our school system area?
I'm not sure if they'll send us that or not. They do ask you what district you work for, but outside of that, they will ask for your role, if you're a teacher, parent, maybe something like that. But I'm, I'm not sure that they'll give us any, any of that information or not. They will, as the process continues on, these standards will not be implemented until 27, 28. So it is a long process, but they want to get teacher feedback. They will bring teachers to the table. There will be a revision and review process before the installation phase, which is when these would go before the State Board of Education for approval. Then the implementation phase would, would come into the public school units across the state.
Which we've been going through some of that with the social studies crew, or science recently.
Science.
So we're on the tail end of that. Now we're just starting it over.
Yes. And most, most, all of the areas are up for review and revision. So it's gonna be a busy time over the next few years.
Okay, everybody good? Okay. Thank y'all, appreciate it and know how hard you work. Yes, ma'am. Very excited for.
So I guess.
That's it.
Yeah.
I didn't say you could go anywhere.
Let's, that's right. We'll stop just missing you.
I tried to pick out a couple, just to, you know, elementary, middle, and high. I tell you, it's, I think my concern about it is somehow, how do we go about making sure that the parents, they go on the website and see it and understand what they're reading? Because some of the stuff, as a teacher, I got you, as a board member, I got you. Parents seeing something, I said, what in the world does this mean? So I just wondered, do we have something that we can sort of have a template at the beginning saying, and we, we put these on the websites for the school, write school improvement plan? You know, what, what do you mean by that? It's, it can get a little complicated. Just, just throwing it out there. So this is for us to review to approve at a later meeting. Questions?
Do you have any questions?
I'll ask a couple of questions. I was looking, you know, looking at Mr. Shaw, but I'm gonna ask a question.
That was not Shaw.
Yeah, I've seen Shaw. I worked for, I've seen him.
I, I mean, I'm one, I sat and looked at every one of the plans. There was one, and I'm just asking for clarification for, there was one that their, their goals are going down. Graduation rate, AWA, ACT work keys, biology, engineer, our English two, math one, and three math readers. So their goals are going down. Target seventy-four percent, twenty-three, and twenty-four, seventy-one percent, twenty-five, sixty-six percent.
But I think you have to look at the actual sixty-nine. So, I mean, if, if you went up to eighty, and it was only sixty-nine, it's gonna be tough to make. I think you have to adjust the target based on your results from the year before, right? Is that, that makes sense?
So that's why the goals are actually going down.
So when you get your target score from this past year's data, typically most schools, the rule of them, when I was a principal, I know with Margaret, the rule of them was probably a minimum five percent increase, because a five percent increase is a big, pretty substantial jump. But because you're dealing with different cohorts of students, every year that you review a school improvement plan, your students are coming in at different levels. So you, you've got to adjust. So if you've got a cohort that comes in, say, into a middle school, and in fifth grade they were twenty-two percent, to say that they're gonna be at sixty-five percent would be an unreasonable amount. But, so every year, when principals meet with their school improvement teams, they make those decisions together. All stakeholders are involved in that process together, and they have to look at their data and disaggregate that data to see what is an attainable goal, what is reasonable to ask of those students.
So you might ask some high achievers that have moved on to the next level.
Right.
I mean, they've got some coming in who are low level, so you gotta be realistic with them.
Yeah, and teachers are gonna want to adjust. Teachers are always gonna want to adjust to that cohort group that comes in to a school, because we want, we do want to have high, high aims for everything that we do and have high achievement standards, but we've got to make those attainable. We can't expect a, a group to come in who has been performing lower to exceed a certain percentage if that's, you know, not obtainable for them. So we do try to adjust, and I'm speaking from the time that I was a principal, you know, getting input from those stakeholders was critical in seeing, you know, how you dive into that data.
Another one was using Graces, G R A C E S. What is that?
So that's a writing rubric. So in middle school for years, we've used the RACE strategy for writing. And so we have two schools actually that are in full implementation of the Graces rubric, which is adding grammar and summarization to their rubrics for this year. We are working on literacy across, across middle and high schools, especially, and elementary's been working on that for a long time. But we have tried to really push more writing in our schools, because we know that if you can write, you can read, that, that goes together. And so we are really pushing for that implementation for the writing rubric to be in place. We had one high school that went in full implementation last year, and it worked very, very well, and it was very successful. And so our other two high schools are now biting off small nuggets of that to get it in place, so that we can get our teachers trained and get them moving along. So we had one principal that was an English teacher in high school, and so naturally she wanted to try that, yeah. And it was very successful, and we had great results from that.
Okay.
So that would be one of the reasons for that that you're seeing.
I appreciate y'all sending these things, because it's, I mean, it's a lot of learning for me still.
Yes.
Of what they're, what they're going through. I was glad to see that there was four schools on there that had some discipline as part of their goals. I was very pleased to see that.
Reduce suspensions and stuff.
Reduce suspensions, what I want to make sure of though is that we're still holding it accountable for how reducing suspensions and MIRs.
So it's interesting that you bring that up, because I think that through our CMVs, we are seeing what our principals are doing with putting some practices in place to help our students have some restoration to find out why the behavior is happening, then get them back into the classroom as soon as we can, unless it is, you know, something they should be suspended for, obviously. So they are following the code of conduct, and that's what we want them to do, is follow the code of conduct. But we are seeing suspensions going down. We are trending in the right direction. And I do believe it's because of the efforts of everybody in the school, the counselors, the principals, teachers, all getting in there together. So we were seeing some positive impact from leadership framework is, is moving in a great direction with our schools and being very intentional with that time. And so we're seeing some great things happen across our schools, especially in middle and high school, which is where you're gonna see most of your suspensions happen.
Y'all, how do you track progress on goals? Is it a quarterly basis or monthly?
Monthly, principals meet monthly with their school improvement teams. And actually, they, they should have a secondary meeting, which can be a committee meeting. It doesn't have to be the school improvement team. That's the principal's choice, that they could have a data collection team and then their entire sit team, the whole school's invited to attend sit meetings. They're open to the public. We have to include everybody. So they do meet on those monthly.
It's one thing that principals, when you have your board visits, they, if they have a sit-down time, they'll typically go through their board goal or their goals on the school improvement plan, so that you can kind of, again, iterate what their focus is and, and the direction they're trying to take their schools. And then those school improvement team meetings on a monthly basis, they typically will start with that data and chart their projects.
And if I may add to that, something she mentioned, Mrs. Harris said our CMVs, those school curriculum monitoring visits are very vital, I think, to this process, because those happen twice a year. And the curriculum team with some other directors and district level folks are in the schools twice a year on top of your board visits, looking at data, looking at school improvement process, looking at are they improving or not? And then principals get feedback from the team when they're in their building. So that feedback is very vital, in my opinion, to, to the whole planning process and to looking at their data, because they would share with us this time of year the actual goals. And then when the team goes back in the spring, in that monitoring cycle, they should be updating us on where they are in their goals. And to your point, Mr. Whitaker, if they're unable to make progress on a goal, they should be able to tell us why, and are they adjusting the goal based on needs? Are they adjusting the goal based on, well, we gotta hold these kids accountable and here's what's happened in the data? So that is a valuable process, and I think it's not only to help principals, but it's also to inform the work that's done at the district level to be able to support, because what happens with this team then is when they leave those schools, they're gonna know what's happening, they're gonna know how to support secondary, and they're gonna know how to support them in elementary. So I think that's vital to the process.
Well, and I would.
I would just say it, it's also vital that they, that they don't, we don't just start, stop at school goals. Each individual professional learning community, grade level, whatever you wanna call it, sets their own goals as well. So they are looking closely at their own data and setting goals for the particular students they're serving. So it's, you know, and then, and then it becomes a kid by kid. So it goes from school all the way down to grade level, down to we're looking at individual students. So total school improvement, not school improvement.
Well, and to that, to that point, we were in North Surry the other day. We asked some questions like, well, why did you make that change? Because it was different from last year. And Dr. Badger, every time, said the school improvement team met and said, we need to fix this. And it was something as simple as, we had picnic tables right outside of the cafeteria in North Surry. She said, they said, we've got enough room in the cafeteria. Where are most of our discipline problems at lunch? At those picnic tables. So they took the picnic tables out, the kids go back inside, discipline went down. School improvement team initiated that. So these plans are, I mean, they mean something. And she, those are three or four different things she brought up that, you know, we changed it because sit team said, we think we need to do this.
I appreciate that you said team, because it is a whole school team, and it is an effort in the building. The principal's not writing the plan, Margaret's not writing the plan, it's that school improvement team, full of stakeholders coming together, and it's a living, breathing document that's monitored all year long.
So that'd be my last point is, for those watching, when you watch later, go to your school, your child's website for the school, find the, the sit, the plan, and we have apparently every one of those sit team. But you don't have to be on the sit team to come and listen. Go find out. It's typically right after school, three fifteen, three thirty, same day of the month. Go listen and see what's going on. That's the way we improve our school.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, you go ahead.
I was just gonna say, how soon will it be before we see the actual, we see, I see a target? One particular one says seventy-five percent, which is growth over last year. When do we actually see the actual?
So we will measure that against the test results at the end of the school year. But as we go through the year, we will be measuring, so for example, if they're taking common assessments or standard space assessments in our schools, or DIBELS for Margaret, I won't speak totally for you, but we will, we will be monitoring data throughout the entire year to see if we're hitting our targets the best that we know how. So one of the things that we do in secondary is we have a kid's EVOs projection, which is their growth projection score, where we, we think that they will fall. It's not a perfect indicator for us mathematically, because that algorithm they figure that on is kind of obscure, at least to me, and I'm a former math teacher. But we can at least look at our standard space assessments and common unit assessments and say, okay, is that kid scoring above eighty-five percent of their peers? Or are they falling below the mark? And what are we doing in the meantime to help restore that kid's knowledge that they're missing? So teachers are doing this constantly, and it's just best practice, and that's what teachers, that's what, that's what they're designed to do. That's what we've all done as teachers. So they will look at their kids throughout the year, but then when they meet as a sit team, they can look at their NC check-in data, they can look at their standard space assessments or common assessment data, their DIBELS data, and they can start making some predictions about where we are and what do we really need to focus our attention on? Where are our gaps? What standards or objectives are we not meeting the mark in? And then they make the adjustments so that they can adjust, if it's core instruction, what happens with eighty percent of the students, or is it a small group of students that needs support? And, and sometimes that's a subgroup like multilingual learners, or sometimes it's a group of exceptional children, sometimes it's an AIG group. And so we're just trying to get better at that craft and that skill of really diving into data. We do that in our professional learning community meetings weekly in our schools, but then they meet monthly as a sit team to make sure we're hitting the target. But to get the real target, we have to wait on end of grade test data or end of course test data.
So maybe July?
Yeah, so two, two thirty is usually their target base.
We'll see the same sheet with that completed, that would be actual in there.
You can look at the prior years now.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that. I've seen, and a lot of them show growth. And that's the way I'm understanding growth.
Right, yes.
When you come out and you throw a growth at me, I don't understand. I have to see these.
Yes. And what you'll see happening then by next July is they're already working on the twenty-five, twenty-six plan. So it's a, it's always a cycle, it's always in flux, always moving.
Is it feasible without extra work for us to get like a six-month update? Here's where we're at on this.
Yes, we can, we can run reports from the platform that this goes in, which is End of Star or NC Star, a comprehensive report or any, one of these reports can be ran at any given time, so that you can see the progress a school would be making.
Six months through, or halfway through the school year, we can say, all right, hey, this elementary school was seventy-five percent their goal, I'm knocking it out, and this one's at thirty.
Yeah, we can run these reports, because they input their data every month when they meet as a sit team. So these, again, it's a living, breathing document.
And make it a part of the, the curriculum monitoring process, that it's a cycle anyway. You can do that and update.
Thank you for that. That was, again, that's a lot of information, and it's, it's good information. Do me a favor, while, let me ask a question. This is a perfect time to ask it, since you all were here. Please dispel a myth for me. I've been contacted that, by several people, saying that they can't give a grade less than a fifty to students, because it's the policy of Surry County Schools. The policy of Surry County Schools is that we can't give a grade less than a fifty. I don't think that that's correct, because I can't find a policy like that. And the administrative rules. I've instructed teachers not to give a grade less than a fifty during the first grading period only, and that's for the mere fact that we don't want students to get so far behind that they can't pass the class at the very beginning of school. Beyond the first quarter, teachers grade all they want, but a fifty's failing, right? So does it really matter if it's less than a fifty, if it's a thirty, or a twenty, or a ten, or a zero? It's, it's still failing. Our grading scale, sixty and above is passing, and if it's below sixty is failing. So that's, that's been the, the process we've used for years, and it's during that first quarter of grades that we've said that. Because I've said that and told principals that, under administrative rules.
So it's not only individual tests? It is on the six, the six-week grading period? And as a teacher, I used to look at that and said, that's the craziest thing I've ever heard. What do you mean, I can't give them? But if a student makes a twenty in that first six weeks, and they got twelve more weeks in the class, and they know by that twenty they can't pass, they check out.
Well, the reason I ask about it, because I, I'm sure that, that can't really be true. But what about the kid that is struggling? They're doing everything they can to make a fifty. Then you've got Johnny in the corner that ain't picked up his pips a lot here, and he's gonna make a fifty just for breathing.
Just for those first six weeks. He's still gonna fail the class if he stops, if he doesn't do anything.
But it's, 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 I don't know, maybe this is just, this is, I'm not an educator, so to me, this is just rewarding, it's like, I, I can't send and have my mortgage payment and hope that they'll give me the rest of it. Yeah, I, I see, I don't see it rewarding at all, because the kid is still failing. I mean, an F is an F. It's, it's the way that I look at it. And I guess at the end of the day.
And I guess at the end of the day, have we called the parents and tried to get the kid help? This kid should be on a radar screen of, you know, SOS, this kid needs help. Is there, is the counselor's involved, social worker's involved? Are we making phone calls to the parents and having real conversations? Not texting, but real conversations? Have we invited those parents to come in and meet with us? And that was another part of this October 11th Parent Teacher Conference Day. Great opportunity. If kids are struggling to get them in, it's not meant to reward. It's meant simply to help those kids during that first semester or that first grading period so that they are not struggling to just survive. I mean, it could be they've had attendance issues, could be travel issues. I mean, you just never know at the beginning of school. It's not meant to reward at all. But it was only specified during the first grading period. Beyond that, I respect the teachers' rights to be able to grade students effectively. I think that's a professional judgment opinion of theirs, and I respect that. But we just ask them during that first grading quarter not to give them less than a 50.
And I can tell you, as a teacher, that student shows their colors the second, six weeks. If they're going to continue with that 20 work, they're going to get a 20. If they were doing everything they can, but they see the light, maybe they do 70 in the second six weeks and they end up passing the class. So it's probably not going to affect a lot of students.
So what I'm being told, so we're past the first grading period. But they're being told now that it's a county policy that you've got to give a minimum of a 50.
We'll be glad to communicate that with principals at the next leadership team meeting.
Teacher or the teacher?
I felt very joking, this story.
I knew it from day one when I taught in high school, so I...
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Yes, we appreciate you doing that.
I know it's going to be closer by the hand. Okay, I saw protecting our students strategy. I tried to click it on these links, it wouldn't let me in. Because it's a PDF. It's a PDF. I don't think that's right, because I wanted to see the survey.
Oh, inside.
Oh, inside the survey. And I'm certainly sure that. We, you can see when I got this was October 15th. I knew that it was coming. It was general statute that between middle school and high school, there was training for staff. It's a video, about 15 minutes long. There's a middle school video, about 15 minutes long for students. And then about a 15-minute video for ninth grade through 12th grade. This was supposed to have been out a long time ago, but they just got it completed. There's still some things I'm working through with it. One, how do you deliver it? And there's also, and I've said it to Mr. Johnson, it says in there potentially about an opt-out for a student to opt out of watching it. Well, in order to do that, then the parents would need to know what they're opting out of. So, and in here it said, take that to your local school attorney. So which I did, but, you know, we're, I just got this. And I went through all the videos and actually did the staff training on my own. But we've got to work through how to push this out. And really, what's the timeline? It never gives you a timeline in here where when it's supposed to be done. The law says within the first five days of school, well, August, so we've got this October 15th. So does that mean for next year, is it this year? There's some things I have to work through. But I can certainly share the links to those.
Well, the first thing I thought of, I mean, the law is in place to help students recognize that potentially they are being abused or abused.
That is correct.
So I don't see why we'd want anybody to opt out of this. They're not gathering any information.
And I'm sorry you couldn't click on these links, but there's, one of the links at about page 20, it has a section in there about potentially opting out. And take that to your local school attorney that was plugging that out for the side. So I've shared this with, but there's a lot in it. I mean, there's a facilitator's guide. I mean, it's just not show the move, show the video. I mean, there's questions to be asked. Teachers need to be trained on how to, if you're going to read through this script, because they don't want you breaking off from the script. They want the script exactly how they put it. And, but it does open up dialogue that students may have with that teacher. But you're exactly right, that's the point of it, for students to know if there is grooming or something that is happening with an adult in the building. What you can do, you'll report that.
I don't know about how y'all feel about it, but I want to take, I want to see it. I want to see what the kids are seeing, or the staff is seeing, because, and I know it's not one of those you just throw out there and let them watch a video. That's not going to work. It has to be facilitated by a staff member.
That is correct.
But I'd like, because if we're going to truly protect our kids, we need to know what they're seeing.
The staff, the staff training's individual, because you have to take a quiz at the end.
And you've got to have an MC kid cloud.
Yes, and people that don't, we can do it through Google. They gave us the link to be able, so folks who don't have the credentials to do it on campus, you can do it through Google. And then a certificate could be printed out for those. But staff is individual. Students is in a classroom with a teacher going through the facilitator's guide and showing, and then follow-up questions or discussion questions afterwards.
And one of the reasons I think that's important is when parents come to us and say, "What's this thing they're trying to get me at my kid to take?" We'll know, we'll have seen it.
I'll certainly do that.
Okay.
Because every staff member, doesn't matter, it's just not teachers that would need to view this. It'd be all staff that would view.
I like, I like that idea, because these kids, like you said, some kids are looking for acceptance so much that they'll overlook the girl that are the names out there. So it's definitely something needed out there. Not saying anything bad about our teacher, but every profession.
So that's, yes, I'm concerned.
Thank you. Any questions, any other concern? Yeah, I'll remember not to click on the link anymore, because it just looks empty like that. Okay, next, the NIO agreements.
And...
This is Gary.
You know, some states are already doing this. So, you know, this is something that we thought maybe would come. And the state board was working on a policy. But on October 11th, Wake County Superior Judge paid the way for North Carolina High School Athletic Association member school students to profit from NIO agreement. There's a process that's involved in it. They just can't do it. They have to, and give some of these in this letter. If you go to the law or the policy, which is, I think, is attached to, you know, what they have to do. If they're under 18, they have to have a parent. And then they have to submit the agreement to the athletic director, the principal. And there's rules in which they can and cannot. They can't wear their uniform while they're doing, you know, something. They can't, you know, like a race car driver, put a sticker on their uniform that they're supporting, you know, unless it's the company in which they're, the uniforms are like Nike, for example. If the school's wearing Nike uniforms, a person had a contract with Nike, yeah, they could, because it's part of the team uniform. But no additional... There's a lot of questions, and they're supposed to put out a Q and A, which we have not received yet on this.
I like the fact that the student has to take an NIO education component.
Yes, they do.
So that they know what they're getting themselves into when they agree to this or then their parents signed the contract. Because it sounds like free money.
If they're, yeah, if they're younger, then the parent would have to take the course and... But that's fresh, off the press, and it's, we're supposed to get more Q and A guidance on that, which I'll certainly share with you once I receive that.
I know Mr. Johnson's here, but I'm pretty sure that a Wake County Superior Court judge has no authority over us. They do over the association. But they don't have any authority in Surrey County. Unless it was a state, but I know we've got to do it, it's coming.
It is coming, that is for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? They're never going to ask me to give me money to put my name on anything, I know that.
I think this just takes, this makes a lot of issues a lot more complex. Student transfers, athletics, fundraising, booster clubs, foundations, area businesses.
What if a student signs a contract saying, "I'm going to play 75% of the game so you can see me to get the advertising out there"? Is that going to put pressure on that coach?
I say all that to say, those are questions we all have, but I think we kind of realize that this is taking a lot of trouble. And Kevin made a good point today. And this has impacted the NCAA, and they still haven't figured it out.
In a very, very negative way.
Across the country. And I'm not sure how we're going to figure it out on the high school level. Because it, certainly, we've seen the impact at the collegiate level.
College sports isn't the same as it was.
Well, you know, high school sports are meant to be competitive, safe, and pure. And this certainly makes it harder. So we'll do the best we can as we get more information and communicate that out to the board.
What I think, you know, you're going to have one or two powerhouses in every community, sports. And that's going to hurt the other school. And to me, if I go to a baseball game or basketball game, and I know who's going to win before I get there, that's not a sport in the game.
And when you stack all the best players up, because if you stack all the best players up because of the NIO, that's what's going to happen.
You know who's going to win, is that that player? Everything comes down to money.
Well, I think it was mentioned in here that they're trying to guard against transfer or use the NIO to entice transfers. But that's, that's still, you know how transfers are to that?
Yes.
And it's still difficult to say, well, yes, it is. It is a violation and not a violation.
And I think, like I was saying, talking to Doc Reeves earlier today, just like the NCAA, they can't stop the transferring from happening. And they, I think they'd like to, but kid plays at one school, and then he goes out, you know, puts his name in, he's listening to offers, and then he, big guy who's...
Like what it's done at Florida State University. They're about one in five this year. A lot of kids on those teams.
New team every year. All majors.
But I will, as I receive information, I will share it on to you.
Thank you. It's kind of what we wanted or not, it is. Okay, the cell phone policy in Middleland High School. Doc Reeves.
Board members, I added this to the agenda. You have listed Policy 3225, technology responsible use. And on that, in that policy, it outlines basically our policy on restrictions. And the current policy allows our principals to establish those rules within their schools under Section E, personal technology on school system property. Second sentence, each principal may establish rules for his or her school site as to whether and how other personal technology devices, but including but not limited to smartphone, tablets, laptops, may be used on campus. So in preparing for this agenda item, I did survey our principals. You see their responses, just ask them three questions. What's your current daily practice regarding student cell phones? Are cell phones currently a problem? And then if you can change policy, what suggestions you have? So we've got all of our high school, middle and high school principals to submit their answers there. So I hope that helps you kind of have this discussion and gives you some information from our different schools. I think every school's, for the most part, you see consistency. You do have different schools, like the Early College is a much different environment than a traditional high school. And then you have SOMS, which is on top, which is very unique in and of itself. Middle schools and high schools can be, can be different. So different schools, but overall, most feel like their current policy is working.
Our policy refers to Policy 4318.
Which I couldn't find either.
We don't have a 43.
I think you took it out when we consolidated.
Oh, 4318. 4318. 4312. 4318. Okay, so then that's...
It's in that same E section you were talking about. I was looking for the same thing, because it references student use of personal devices. What, do we have a list of what 4318 says?
This is what 483... 4318 says from the policies to the schools or the school board association. I'm not real, but that's what it is.
I do thought that was interesting. One of the middle school principals said, they would ask, do you have issues with them? With cell phones in a school would cause a problem? The answer was, cell phone policy. Only cell phone issues we deal with occur outside of the school. Cyberbullying, like we heard from the middle school a couple of years ago, kids not getting rest because they're up all night on their phone. They come to school next day, they're cranky, they're ear to wool. But I just thought that was interesting that the principals put that in there.
I've seen a teacher put different on the board and told the students to turn their phone on, turn it up. And they, if you get an alert or snap, go up and put a mark. In a 90-minute class, 400 and some times, that one classroom was hit. And I got to wonder if we don't just need to get one single policy that says, "You will put it in that pouch." I don't know that we can ever get to a place where we tell them they can't take it with them. A lot of parents, including myself, were in a school shooting or whatever, whatever it is. I would like to know, if my kid can say, then let me know they're okay. However, if you listen, if you listen to the teachers, the teachers are saying it's a problem. About everyone I've talked to, so they'll look back, somebody will be playing on their phone, or somebody will be on Facebook or Instagram or whatever it is. So I see what all of them have had to say. I don't have any suggestion at the time. I believe our policy is working. The only thing is, I don't know what their policy is. What is their policy? If we had a list of what their policy was, and we could make that accounting-wise thing that says, "You cannot use it during class time at all." Now, I do realize that Early College is probably a different person to being on the community college, the certain community colleges campus. But nevertheless, at some point or another, we're not, we're not a communication company. We are a education company. And if we're losing, if we're losing some in all this communication that's going on in this country. I told y'all the story. We were working on a particular thing, put a caution tape. The kids walked out of class, walked straight into the caution tape and kept walking, never even slowed down. So we put a two before across it, screwed it into, and the next one that came up through it was on their cell phone, and it cut a complete bit and landed on their back. Because they weren't paying any attention. Now, they're walking and not paying attention. What are they doing with these teachers? They can't be listening to them, because I'll be honest with you. If I pick up my phone right now in the middle of this meeting and I do this, which I have done one time tonight, I totally lose what y'all are doing. I have to come back and catch up. I don't, I don't think that's really fair of the teachers to spend a whole lot of time delivering that information to give to the students. I just think we need one central policy that says, "This is the way that it is."
Well, I don't see why. I mean, I'm the only one sitting at this table with a child that's currently sitting in our school system. And she follows a cell phone policy at her school. I don't like her having a cellphone, because it's our biggest fight, but she's gonna have a cellphone, she's thirteen years old. When they get there in the morning, they turn their phone in. And if something happens during the day, if there's a schedule change, if she needs something. The other day, the school nurse had to call to get permission because she didn't have her asthma thing, but it's something. They let her get her phone. At the end of the day, she picks up her phone to go about her business, she's got it when she's playing sports and on the bus and et cetera. I've seen too many Durham TikTok videos, if somebody's walked up to me and said, "Have you seen this"? And they're doing it in class in high school. That's a problem. That's a major problem. There ain't no need for a teacher to have to deal with all that they have to deal with. And also make sure that this student isn't sitting there on TikTok and making a video, or making some kind of meme, or, or bullying somebody else. So I'm in full support of, of a child having a phone, but we got landlines at school. If they need to make a telephone call during the day, they go to the office. That's just my two cents.
Dr. Badger wrote, cellphone policy is not the problem. Consistency with implementing school expectations of docking phones has been what? And we have focused on this, on this school year, which tells me that, that maybe the teachers aren't listening to what part of Ms. Badger's policies. So if, if we establish a single policy that covers all twenty schools, that should take it out of their hands and they don't end up being the bad guy.
Well, and I could say as a teacher with thirty kids in your class, when you see that child or that student, you say, "Put it up", and they won't do it, it's gonna take you twenty to twenty-five minutes to solve that problem, because I've had them say, "Suspend me, I'm not giving you my phone". And you can't physically take it from them. So there's gonna be battles there, and that's sometimes why the teachers don't fight. You know what? You just shut up, keep it, I'll teach the other twenty-nine. So it's not, it's, I definitely, I, I support it. When they go in a classroom, they put it in a pouch, and they get it back when they leave it in, in the class period. If they're gonna use it between classes, which means they're not gonna get to the next class in five minutes like they should, but that's, that's on them. But I will tell you, um, didn't you attend a safety thing the other day about, we were talking about lockdowns and cellphones? And didn't they, what was the recommendation that they?
Probably what, what Mr. Hudson was talking about, you all do the love you guys, right? We, I went to that training, um, and the state is, it's really about lockdowns and reunifications and all of that. And I've seen the signage over there. But when they were presenting, this was the Center for Safer Schools, and they had this group there training districts from all over the state of North Carolina. They did talk about the importance of cellphones, and it's a process, like if you're in a lockdown situation. And they gave the stats that seventy percent of these situations are done with, are over within the first five minutes. Ninety percent of them are done within the first ten minutes. But a kid may be in that room for hours, you know, with, with... So they recommended that if having the cellphones, and then the teacher would say, "In the room, okay, you five students right now, text your parents and let them know that, that you're okay." They text them. And then let another group, another group, and another group. And then ten minutes later, tell the kid, text your parents again to let them know that you're, that you're okay. Because the thing was, parents are going to flood the school, and law enforcement may be still dealing with the situation. They don't, they can't, they don't want, and understandably, parents, they didn't want a thousand parents showing up that they have to take care of them too. But maybe the threat is still, is still live and active. So they did tell us to encourage students to get their cellphones, but it's orderly. First five minutes, they're sending a text to you and say... And there was a safety director got up and he read that there was a lockdown in a district. I couldn't hear the district, he said, but it was real, it was a real lockdown. And his daughter was able to text him all through that process, but he knew that she was behind a locked door. She knew that she was safe at that point. So they recommended, if you got into that, there is a process for students to use a cellphone to communicate with their parents during an emergency situation.
So in other cases, they'd have to have it with them.
I guess, within the class or in that, in that fact, to be able to communicate out to the, "I'm safe", to let them, let them know that.
But here's the problem I have with that. I brought it up to a principal of a high school and said, after I'd heard what you told, what do you think? And the answer was, it would, it would start mass chaos. Because that student's not gonna text them, "I'm fine", because the parent's gonna come back, "What's going on? Why, there's sixteen people here, I've heard with a weapon". Are they gonna give them accurate information that's gonna cause, "Okay, my child is fine"? Or are they gonna make stuff up they've heard and make it worse?
Yeah, that, that may be, but I, I think these, these folks have done, you know, a lot of research behind it and, and worked, worked through it to know. Our kids, and I will say this, our kids during a lockdown, even a drill, are very, very compliant. Because a lot of times, they don't know it's a drill. The staff may know it's a drill, but they don't know it's a drill, and they're very compliant. If you ever, and I walked through them with law enforcement before, just so I could get a feel, I mean, you can hear a hand drop. I mean, it is, they're very, so I think a lot of them would comply, because they're nervous and about it at that, at that time too. But it just made sense that, to me, when you have law enforcement come on the scene and they're worried about the eight hundred kids in that building, and they're not worried about the thousand that's coming in behind them, you know, when the scene is still going on. So there was, well, they just recommended that, that that is, we think cellphones during an emergency situation sometimes are bad. But they do need to wait a little bit, because...
They need to get right information. But even teachers at that point don't know, I've been there. Because law enforcement, the principal's dealing with what's going on in the school, they don't have time to call each teacher and say, you know, here's what we're dealing with.
There's something to be said for staff training, staff direction too. That teacher already has the authority in that classroom, and I'm afraid sometimes this takes it away from them. But if that teacher has the authority in that room, and then that teacher says, "You five, tell your parents this, I am okay, I'm behind a locked door", then maybe that one out of the five maybe, maybe won't. But before getting the information out, there's five parents out there and say, "Mine's is in this classroom", and they're saying... Then all of a sudden, there's one outlier that says, "Hey, there's twenty-five gunmen in our classroom". You know, it, it usually doesn't take too long. As long as you say it, I, I started to a minute ago, just as a matter of, turn mine over and set one of my alarms off and watch everybody stop and look at me. Because I can take your attention. I, I, you know, I know how to do that. And that phone will do it faster than anything I've ever seen. I just, again, if we have a pouch there and it says, "Number one, you're number one, number two, you're number two", and you put it in there, turn it down, if it goes off in the middle of the class, it's mine. And if you don't wanna put it in there, you're not, you don't get to be a part of this class.
Not just the safety and, and interference aspect, but look at how they can cheat with a phone.
They do already.
I know. When, when they're sitting there, they just ask ChatGPT to do this or to do that. I mean, I, I'm like, "Why are you even here"?
That's why it needs to be out of their, if it's in, in their possession, like you said, snaps will pop up and they will lose their mind to see what that snap says.
Absolutely. Because like I said, mine went off a few minutes ago, it was my wife texting me to grab some hamburger buns. But I immediately stopped with this meeting to see what she wanted. It's just the nature of... So in the same token, I've also walked into a classroom, have all the kids working on something, on a computer, doing something or another, and look up and, and one of the staff members would be sitting at the desk going through Facebook. I've seen it. So we've got to be an example to them too.
So it looks as if the majority of our schools are docking those phones at the beginning of class or the beginning of school. Under the first question, what's your current daily practice?
That may be what they recommend, but I don't think that's actually happening as a whole. Just from the feedback I've gotten from the teachers across the county is, they pretty much, it's, it's up to each teacher, one will win, if I haven't, I'm not. And like you said, some teachers may be, I'm not fighting that battle. That's just my, my perspective on it and... I, I think we need that, I'm sorry, did we catch up?
I think they need consistency in our school, high schools, and I suppose everybody has basically the same policy. I guess I had my way out down from school all the way there, but I can see the problem with that.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think you should need some consistency with it.
Well, for this high school principal, the terrorism problems, some do not abide by the policy of using them to make videos, cheat on assessments, and cyberbullying. If they could change anything, completely ban or lock them up at the beginning of the day as middle schools do. But I also see that with age comes some more responsibilities, and there are students that leave school. So it may not be feasible to take them at the beginning of the day, go back. So maybe as a starting point, you make a policy that mandates school-wide, county-wide, that they, in the high schools, that they have turn them in at the beginning of class, not get them till they leave. And that takes it off, off the teacher and the principal, and us at us. Somebody drew that up, made that motion, I might end the second. Your motion or...
What you, what you referred to, Kevin, was a safety recommendation.
That's correct, not having them out there.
As a have them available in places that put away.
But, yeah, that has nothing to do with putting them away or anything like that. But if they do have, can have access to the phone during an emergency situation, they recommend that they do reach out to their parents and let them know.
T-one eighties.
They have T-I-eighty-eight.
They still got the...
Texture.
They still got the holders that you had in front of them, so you just put them in.
I think that's what most of our schools are using. You know, we were there in Atkins class at North, he had like a guitar case or some, some kind of case.
But he had chargers in it. So when they came in, they could charge their phone, and he could control it. And then if they had an emergency, had to leave, he just closed up the guitar case and took it with him, and then they've got their phones where they're at. I thought that was a great idea. I'm not so sure if some, it looked like something other than a guitar case, but we'll call it a guitar case.
I don't know what you saw.
Sounds like you're describing a guitar case.
Yes, that's it, that's what we're gonna say. So I think the teachers are taking the measure, well, I wanna, I wanna have some way to control in class, but I also don't wanna tell a principal how to run your school, you know, if they, if it's working for them. So that's a balance that I'm trying to figure out, how do we?
I think, and again, we've got forty-four policies. If you'd like for us to work on this policy, we can add forty-five. Look, take a look at what some other districts are doing. It's, it would be one of those optional policies that the, the state's not, not requiring. But we can certainly do that. I, I, I do think it would be good to have some principal input and, and teacher input. I'd be glad to send that out to our teacher advisory council and get their, their feelings on it and...
What about school improvement team, we just talked about, maybe they would like to weigh in on it, on what they're seeing in their classrooms?
Well, if you just adopt this policy forty-three eighteen, more recognize the cellphones on our school, a lot of government-oriented tool. Therefore, students are permitted to possess such devices on school property so long as the devices are not activated, used, displayed, or visible during the instructional days, otherwise directed by school rules. So you can use them, you can have them.
So we get...
As an instructional day or during instruction?
During the day, you can have them, but they're not to be out being used.
During instruction.
Correct. It's referenced in our...
It could be we implemented that policy but didn't check, make sure.
Change some literature somehow, some wording to update it, because it had pagers in there or something.
Oh, yeah, and we removed a couple because they were redundant.
It also used to have a ten thousand series, has the technology with information, and some of that was consolidated and condensed.
I think also the problem that you have with saying your policy in every school, you start having one high school with more liberal policy than the other, that we want the transfer over, then two generally won't let them go because of parents.
Because of cellphone policy.
Because the parents are...
Because of cellphone policy, yeah. Well, and I think, I think the other thing we need to think about is, is changing, changing the rules in the middle of the game. Could be a major problem. So we might wanna think about a timeline of when we might wanna do it. Because if you came in and said, "Starting next week, you can't have a cellphone anymore", top of the head's gonna blow off. So how do we implement it and make it fair?
January the first, as soon as they come back from Christmas.
So am I hearing you like staff to take a look at a policy that would allow that? Is that a consensus?
Well, we can talk to staff and see if they can come together with something basically the same to all schools.
We're all agreeing with that, consistency, right? I think we're all agreeing.
And it could be bringing back forty-three eighteen and saying...
We'll, we'll work on it and, um...
So now you have forty-five.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring number forty-five.
There you go. Give me the phone.
If we're not giving you something, we're taking it away.
So I said, detox every Christmas.
You just won't tell him that, Chip.
Yeah, and that's the worst time, because they're gonna be sitting on the twenty-four seven.
They'll give you about fifteen, twenty days there, you, you can...
Okay, Mr. Vine, our safety equipment grant. So have we submitted the proposal yet, or is that...
No, it's, it's due the end of this month. I just reached out to principals and some directors and getting, got feedback from them as far as, um, needs and wants and things like that in the, um... And I got some prices from Robert and Lucas on submission, on some things this, this end of last week and into this morning. But five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand per LEA, so I don't know where we'll land on that. But I did put up to, and this is just an option of draft, but some of the needs that we still have are cameras in different locations of, of the school. Radios are always going to be something that's, you know, every year we need, need new ones. And Lucas also talked to me about batteries, buying backup battery packs, so that if, that's usually the first thing that goes on the radios. They just don't hold a charge anymore, it's like these things too, I mean, the battery does not. So we could have backup batteries to, to be able to put in the ones, because the actual radio is okay, just the battery part. I did put weapons detectors in there, and I put open gate, that's a question mark there. You know, it could be something, something different, two, two more per high school, one per middle school. Those are the twenty, around eighteen to twenty thousand dollar. Not that we would get rid of the ones that we currently have, but if we're going to, to move them around more and do randoms and different things like that, the, the ones we got right now is not designed for that. I know, I think with some, South County's going with the open gate as well. Those are very portable, I mean, very, very portable.
Well, so they have enhanced detection too.
But it does, I think you're wrong.
Controlled.
And you'll, you'll speed the line coming through, much faster.
They can be used in conjunction with the ones that we...
Yeah, we, we would still use the ones that, that we currently have too. AEDs, I put one more per elementary. Right now, we have one AED in all of our elementaries, I think we need at least two.
Do we just make sure that we replace the ones we need in different roles? So this would start that replacement.
Well, actually, an add too. Like I said, I, I don't think one at Franklin Elementary is enough. I think a pile of elementary, I think every elementary should have them in different locations.
One at the gym, I think is the way.
And I looked at the current numbers like Central, Middle, Gentry, North, or in Surrey Central have, I think they could use an additional one as well. That's how I came up with the, Neil sent me the list of all the AEDs. There are also battery packs, the same thing that I was talking to you for, so for about half the cost, you can get battery packs to go in, back into the current AEDs for them to last longer, instead of just getting rid of them. Again, the battery life on, on some... Again, the battery life on, on some of these things like A E Ds and radios, that's what causes the problem that they're gone. But we could put new battery packs in there. We did have three schools that requested some additional Keyless Entries, Flat Rock Shoals and Westfield. And then Robert sent me the priorities of, and he sent this in, of exterior doors and hardware. And he mentioned buildings here of areas, and that can be, exterior doors can be part of the grant. Is what, is what they, uh, reached out to the center to ask. And that's where he prioritized the, uh, the exterior doors and hardware to replace. And then we've talked about fencing and, um, I don't know, um, what the total cost of that would be, but I'll give you an example. If you look, everybody knows Surry Central High School to the left side, that whole area down there on the left side by the different wings, it's open. So with a fence down through there, we help to force everybody to the front where we have cameras, where, you know, visible instead of walking out of the woods into.
Well, all three high schools right now basically have a way to come in the backside if you know where you're at.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is there still the opening at the tennis course there at Surry Central from the college side where you walk right up the hill?
I don't think there's any open there now. Because we have to, we have to throw the tennis balls. What?
There's a small opening. If you're sitting, because I have, an S R O. rode me down there and showed me, said, look for this, the grass is worn out, and they walked it down the hill. They parked it.
Never had that when I was at college. We'd have to throw the tennis ball back over the fence because they couldn't come get them.
Hey, who's going to ever like?
Somebody has cut the.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I thought it was falling all the way up through there.
I didn't realize there, till they got me over there. Somebody opened it up.
That's, this is what I put together, talking to principals and and directors to give me feedback. Again, this is five hundred thousand. If we get two hundred thousand, I would come back to you for, let's prioritize this list. But if there's other things you would like to see or take off, you know, please let me know, and I'll get started on this grant and send it in.
So do you have to send in this list as what we?
I have to send in what, what we're requesting now. They realize that, that, you know, I'm putting five hundred thousand, they put two hundred. They're not gonna come back and say, okay, resubmit it again. But it needs to be, the two hundred thousand needs to be something off of this list. And we could part, we could put it all into one thing if we wanted to, but it would have to be off this list.
Well, I like the list. This basically fits what you got from the principals and from Robert.
I like it. I would like to see us get an enclosed trailer for reunification.
Well, we, we, we may be able to pull that off. And I'm with this grant, we're still waiting on some cost, cost on directional signs. Um, but other things came in less than what we budgeted for the grant. I believe there may be.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be money left on last year's grant, which has to be spent by June thirtieth and twenty-five. I'm pretty.
We might have a, there'll be trailers around here that might help us out with a good props that we could.
I mean, and I hope that the trailer sits there and we never need it. But the, the one time that we need it, it's worth this waiting for.
You're just having to, after all, we shouldn't have to have a ribbon cut on the, on the trailer.
On a trailer.
Yeah, I think the trailer will, will happen.
With every unification, that's what worries me the most, having the equivalent of computers to check status, who can, who can pick up a child who can't.
Demand center type situation, yes.
Kevin, do you anticipate with that training, a lot of additional costs that we have not incurred in the past or things that we're gonna need to purchase?
They, they, they have a list of things, um, nothing really expensive equipment. But I, I don't think it's, it's gonna be a lot. And a lot of their resources and stuff as far as what we use for training and stuff, that's free. It's all free. I guess I'm a train, a trainer now since I went to that, but there's still a lot of training I have to do.
Could you put a line item on here that says, equipment that would help us comply with that law, and that way we got it on the list, but yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve your hard work.
All right, a motion to approve this list to be included in the safety grant, safety improvement grant. Second, Mr. Hudson's a Mr. Let's see, we got it. Any further discussion? This sort of, or the reinforced me that our orders on safety and what we need to do for us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? No?
Thank you.
And if I look at this right, I see adjourned. We're asking, we're asking, we're asking anything else that y'all think we need to go over. It's only six o'clock, only three hour, and Raleigh held out for us, so we're good. Okay, nothing else. Then, now, your motion to adjourn by Mr. Golding, second by Mr. Whitaker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? No? Thank you. I'm not for putting any pressure on you to make the motion or anything.